It looks like every member on the Alamance Burlington School Board was contemplating breaking the law, but in the end, three did vote to break the law. We'll watch the video and hear their discussion in just a moment. Well, hello and welcome to Alamance County Talks Politics. We're going to join the January the 27th, 2025 Alamance Burlington School System as they are discussing the school calendar, whether they should violate state law and adopt another calendar, or whether they should not. They have in this meeting shown that they had sent out a survey, and I believe if my numbers look right, it was a little less than 7,000 people that responded to the survey. Don't know who they are, but I think it was 58% that wanted to change to an earlier start date in violation of North Carolina state law, and there were 41% or 42, 41% that wanted to remain with the same calendar, especially if it was going to result in them breaking the state law. But we're going to go to the video part of this where the school board is discussing actually breaking North Carolina law. And we're going to begin with Sandy Ellington, and this she is the chair of the board, and she's laying out some reasons why it's such a hard decision to make. And I'll be stopping the video along the way and making discussions. But let's, let's get into it now.
Just to echo a lot of what my board colleagues have said, you know, it is increasingly hard or harder the longer I sit in the seat to manage and meet the expectations of everybody. And, you know, when we put the calendar survey out there and we start hearing from the community, particularly the second one, when we've got the actual options to look at. And I went to a community group of young people.
And when I Let me stop her right there if I can. And she's talking about how difficult it is to be in that seat and, and to listen to the needs of the community. Listen, only less than 7,000 people voted in that survey. So this is not a, not a consistent view of the community. People like me, we, I didn't vote. Others didn't vote that I know of. Nobody that I've asked voted in this. So don't, it's not a community initiative in the sense that it encapsulates the whole of the county. So let's get, let's get that straight, number one. And number two, she's going to talk about, well, let me let you hear what she talks about, and I'll, I'll respond to that.
Done speaking, some of the moms are in the back of the room. And I asked if they were ABSS parents, and they said yes. And I was talking about the calendar. And the survey was still open, just encouraging them to do the calendar. And overwhelmingly, they were all for option one. And I reminded them that option one was a violation of the law. I said, so you're okay as a board member if I were to vote for option one, and it's a violation of the calendar law? And the mom looked at me square in the eyes and said, I thought you were elected to represent our children and do what's best for them.
Okay, so let me stop her there. Now, she, she's in front of these, these ladies, and, and they are okay. She asked them, and you realize if I vote for option one, I'm going to be violating the law. And the lady says, you're supposed to do what's best for our children, community, and whatever. Number one, you're supposed to uphold the law, period. You don't walk around and ask this person, this person, this person, what they, I mean, you can ask them that, but that's not going to change the law. The way you change the law, Sandy, is you go and you go out into the community and you get people to vote or elect people in these positions who will do what you're asking them to do. You just don't go around and take a group, a number of people and ask them what they prefer. You could do that. But that does not give you the right to violate state law, because the majority of the people have voted for the person that they want representing them. Whether I agree with their decision or not, we voted in that way. And so you're taking, talking about a little, a group of people. And listen, any mother that would tell you to break the law, any person that would tell you, this is, this is not good. This is, this is lawlessness in this sense. You can say it's better for the kids, and we'll talk about that in just a moment as, as we discuss the details of it. But never, you should not, unless it's an issue between God and man, you do not break the law. You follow what the legislature has laid out, or the courts, or whoever, the legislatures, and then they evaluate whether it's legal or not. Let's continue to listen.
So now, as board members, the seven of us have to sit up here tonight and decide, are we going to do what's best for our kid, our children, our staff, our educators, our academic performance, student centered, future focused? Are we going to follow the law?
So she's, they're making it sound like there's a choice. If you're either going to follow the law, or you're going to do what's best for the kids. My question, and we're going to talk about this, how do you know this is what is best for the kids? I'm going to, we'll talk about this. I believe Dan Engel will bring up something, and I'll elaborate on it. He talks about a 2001, I believe it was Rockingham County, that showed like 40%, they did, they had 40% better grade if they took their test scores before the Christmas break, which hey, I see that. And but even the article that I think he's referencing, if he's looking at the Greensboro News and Record, it said it was inconclusive. It's one year. And, and let's have a more modern study. I looked and I've researched. I can't see where there's a correlation. I'm not saying I'm against them starting school early. That's not the point. But don't throw out these false arguments for this. 2001, it was 20 something years, 20 years ago. And I mean, I'm just saying, let's, let's be, let's be more up to date in our explanations. And so she's making it, she's making it sound like you got to vote between the law and the kids. And that is just not true.
When I'm not really sure that, you know, we talk about Leandro, we talk about the Supreme Court ruling, you know, but then we also have to think about the, the implications. You know, we don't have a fund balance, you know, financially, emotionally, I don't think any of us want to, to fight a lawsuit. But it's hard for me to sit here and ask the community what they want. And here that majority, the law was the same law and the same implications. We talked about this in November. I think we opened the
Sandy, this is not a majority. I mean, you, you have a, this is a little sliver of, of the population. You're making it sound like it's the whole of the county that got involved in this. This is just not the case. Just not the case.
26th, we talked about it in the December meeting a little bit. We opened up another survey last month, or two weeks earlier, when we talked about it, all of this stuff was still out there. We all knew these were possibilities. And I just have a really hard time finding where that balance is to, so the community knows that we value their voice. But we also understand that we did take an oath to follow the law. And at what point do we say enough politics in our schools? Our leaders are, I mean, I applaud anybody that runs for public office, I promise you. But our kids have to come first, and there is no, that's, this is just a hard one for me. I mean, I
Wow. I mean, you're, you say the kids have to come first, and then you're actually sitting there telling them that it is okay to violate law. That, that's not good.
I mean, honestly, I'm nauseated right now. I mean, I just, it's, it's really weighed on me really heavy, because I don't know how to vote. The community needs to know that we're listening to them. Or why do
Well, let me tell you, this community member, and I, and I know a lot of people like me that voted for you to uphold the law. We didn't vote for you to break the law. We vote for you to uphold the law. And if you want to change the law, you take the right channels and you change it. That's what these people, that's what a lot of us voted for. And I can tell you right now, there's a reconsideration, you know, for anybody that votes to violate the law.
surveys in the future. But do I also have compassion and empathy for those that have spent money for vacations? Absolutely. But where do we draw the line to say, you know, we have got to do what's right for our kids? And, you know, I don't, I applaud Representative Rydell and Ross for pushing this bill every opportunity that they get. The leaders in the, in Raleigh, I appreciate what they do regardless of which side they're on and where they stand on any calendar. But at the end of the day, we are all supposed to do what's right for our
Again, Sandy, and I'm going to ask this in all honesty and sincerity. Do you really believe the school calendar is the answer for all of the issues that this Alamance Burlington School System faces? I mean, do you really believe this is what we're discussing? We're acting like this is going to be that which resolves and solves everything. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm simply saying, and I'm not saying it wouldn't help in some way, you know, maybe retention and may have a point to it. I've just not seen the evidence there for it, except the 2001 school study or something that, that Dan Engel will bring up. I'm just not seeing it. But, but that's irrelevant. What I'm saying is, you follow the law, and then you try to change it. All, I didn't mean it's irrelevant. Those things are important, but it's not, you don't do those things in violation of the state law, period. End of story.
And, and that's, I'm just really struggling. I don't mean to go on a monologue, but I just, you know, I just, it's, it's, this is hard, guys.
Yeah. And Sandy, I think what you're talking about is what I feel like a lot of people run, is supposed to be running for public office for, is to represent your community. And that's, and running for the school board is to put the kids first, put the schools first, and to think about, think about them first. And so what you're
You've got to think about the kids. I'm not saying that, but they're not first. The law is first. You've got to think about what is legal, what is right. And you have to follow that. And then you have to work within that framework and make, make it the best that it possibly can be. If you want the law changed, if you don't agree with it, then you go about it the right way. You take the right steps, and you change the law. You just can't throw out the kids, or this, or this, as an excuse to break the law. You're setting example for the kids. You're telling them now it's okay to break the law in certain circumstances. I don't think that's a good idea.
To me, what you're talking about is the actual fact of listening to the people who you oppose, that you're put up here to represent, and to go about things representing them, and not thinking, and not looking at a outside entity.
Now, see, now you're, there you go, listening to the community. Again, look at how many people voted in that. It was, it was minimal. I think I saw on that slide that Lavanda or Ravanda, can't remember her name, Johnson, I believe, Ms. Johnson, put up there, less than 7,000. And, and so it's less than 7,000, and you're talking about a community. You, you're, you are a group, but you're within a large, you're, you're a smaller group. There's a larger group over you. You can't ignore that.
Trying to influence that whole fact. And, and like you said, the politics in the school is something that continues to go on. It's continuous of the fight. And us as a board are always trying to be, almost trying to be that stopgap of, it's gonna, it's gonna stop with us. Like, we, we can't keep on allowing for this to continue to go on. But then we always end up in these challenging moments right here. So, thank you for what you said, though, Sandy. And I just feel all the words that you said, because that's what we're up here to do, is to represent those people.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Mr. Engel?
And I agree with you 200% on what you said. But sometimes we have to use logic and reason when we're thinking through the entire situation. And when I say that, I'm talking about things you brought up, you know, when you look at our fund balance, is it going to be maybe better a year from now than it is right now? And I think Mr. Mesfer would say absolutely. So, you know, because we're going to get sued. I'll just go ahead and say it. I'll go ahead and say it. That's, that's coming, if we do this.
So this is the question. So it looked, I don't, I'm not sure where Dan would fall on this. I know where he falls in at the, at the end of the vote. But I'm just wondering, if at enough in fund balance, would it have swayed his vote? He knows, he knows, and listen, it's not them that's getting sued. They're just a representation of the larger tax base. And that, where's that money come from? They're heavily funded by state, state tax dollars. Well, guess what? Who pays state taxes? They're funded by local tax dollars. Well, guess what? Guess who pays local tax dollars? This is not your money to be throwing around. We already have enough waste in government entities. But Dan, you're, you're exactly right. You're speaking logical and rational. And so let's listen and see how the conversation goes.
You know, I mean, you know, it, this, it's going to happen. So I know the attorney's probably going to kill me for saying that, but, but, but that's going to happen. Because we've been told that. So, so, but, you know, that's the one thing. And then the other
Well, my question is, I'm sure the attorney knows this is going to happen. I'm sure he's told you all this is going to happen. And if he hasn't told you this, I mean, I'm skeptical of that guy anyway. I mean, I'll, and we'll toss another video. I'll bring that up in another video. But, I mean, I'm, I'm sure he's already told the school board this. I'm sure he has.
I mean, there was a lot of folks that, when they filled out the questionnaire, that said, well, look, you know, we've, we've paid for vacation. And I know, you know, I know families where, once they go on vacation, then they'll start paying again for the following year, month to month to month, they make payments. And, you know, if they go to losing it, you know, even if it's only 5% of the people or less, I mean, still, that's that many people that has created, you know, a problem in their lives.
But, but, but Dan, I think Sandy had a good point. If you really believe that this school calendar is the right thing to do, then the teachers, the educators who always say to put the kids first, $1,000, $1,500, $2,000 vacation should not get in the way of the kids' education. It should not get in the way of our kids excelling because they're able to take their year, or end of, or their grade, their test before the school, before the Christmas break. I mean, who, everybody, listen, don't just say some people, everybody should be willing to suffer. Everybody should be willing to sacrifice for the kids. You know, you're always telling taxes, what about the educators? Let's, let's see them do that. But now we're saying, hey, I've already got my vacation plans, man. I can't, can't go that. I mean, I can't forego that. I love the kids, but I can't forego my vacation, even though it might help, help these kids. It might help their Christmas grades, their end of, their, some, their exam grades before Christmas. I mean, Sandy is right. If you really believe that this is going to help that, you should vote for option one, but you should not do it in violation of state law. So let's continue to listen to Dan.
You know, there's talk about, well, you know, the kid could stay out of school three to five days if they, during that week. Yeah, we don't want to do that, folks. So, you know, if we could wait, this is something, we're starting new. So why not go ahead and just go ahead and continue it till 26, 27, stay on the same schedule this year, and move on. You know, hey, if they hadn't decided in the General Assembly in 26, 27, I don't care. We'll go ahead and do it and let them sue us.
So question. So you're, and this is no disrespect, Mr. Engel.
Listen, I respect everything you said.
But, but what I hear, when, what I hear, and I agree with some of those comments, but what I'm hearing is, you're okay getting sued next year, but you're not okay getting sued this year?
I didn't say that.
Okay.
What I said was, when you look at serving the public, when you look at serving the public and being a good steward, being a good steward here with the school board, then it would make more sense to wait to 26, 27 to do that, once we are getting sued, A, and B, in terms of folks that have got plans, they've already paid for plans, we're not disrupting their lives in any way. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Wow. So, you know, I mean, it looks like they are willing. I know they're going to mention their other school systems that are going to be sued. It sounds like Alamance County citizenry constituents, this school board is, is going to take the steps, the path to ignore state law unless it gets changed. It sounds like they're willing to take the steps to, to break state law.
For that clarity.
Plus fund balance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Further, you know, I think that there's momentum in the state to allow flexibility. And next year, it might be a better opportunity as far as pressing along certain areas. You know, I would be willing to make a motion just for
And I think, let me stop there. I think he's right. I mean, there may be momentum. The best thing to do is to wait, let them act, let them respond, and maybe the law will change. Then you can do it legally.
An approval of a one-year calendar, and then maybe we could have a little bit of follow-up discussion. I don't know if folks are ready for that, or
I'm ready.
Okay, yeah. I make a motion that we approve calendar option two, which is compliant with state law.
I'll second.
Okay.
So there we have, I think that's Parker, Parker and Engel. Parker made the motion, Engel seconded it. So now they're going to vote, and they're going to vote on, they're voting on option two, which is your normal calendar, not the early start calendar. And again, I'm not against the early start calendar. I am for them following the law. I mean, instead of being sued, this is ridiculous that we have elected officials that are even discussing this, instead of taking the right steps to make this happen. And I don't know, I'm looking at the superintendent over there, he's about to fall out of the chair, or leaning out, I'm not sure what he's doing. But I'm not, I'm not sure who's pushing for this. But anyway, let's listen to the discussion and watch how they vote.
Motion and a second to adopt calendar option two. Any discussion?
One calendar year, correct?
Yes. For one calendar year, correct, Dr. Parker? Okay. So there's a motion and a second on the floor to adopt calendar option two for the next fiscal, the next school year. Is there any discussion? I will make a comment in the discussion period. I'm trying to think what comment I want, how I want to say this.
So I have two comments prepared, based upon whether the motion succeeds or fails.
Okay. My vote on this motion is because I feel like I'm doing what's right for the children, not saying that any of my colleagues are not. Those that have planned vacations that could have the, the financial impact, I certainly empathize with that as well. And I certainly understand that there would be a potential violation of the law. So those would be the reasons that
So Sandy, you can tell which direction she's going in. She's saying her decision is based on what's best for the kids, number one. Number two, she understands there, if, if you do adopt, number one, that means you're going to start earlier. That means some faculty, some, some families, parents are going to maybe miss a vacation. They've spent money already, and they don't know that they'll get the money back. And she also understands that her vote, if she votes for calendar one, option one, she will be in violation of, of North Carolina law. Again, I'm just simply asking, we say we're doing what's best for the kids. I'm just not seeing the evidence for that. And I'll be glad to discuss this with them. In fact, I have sent an email to, to Sandy, I've sent one to the, I can't remember his name, the guy on the end, on the left-hand side here. Go ahead, she's, I can't remember his name. And also sent one to Parker, and I'll probably try to send one to the others as well, to give them the opportunity to, to tell me, you know, and to explain to me how this is going to help. I know we're, like, again, we're looking at a, Dan Engel brings up a 2001 or 2002, I mean, that's 20 years ago. How do we know? You know, and that's the only, that's the only one. And I was reading of one in California. It's just inconclusive at this point. If, if you're telling us you're doing what's best for the kids, but in reality, we don't know that that is going to be best. Now, if you're going to say it would help them on their, their grades before, to take the exams before Christmas, I could probably see that. And maybe that's what Sandy's alluding to. But even then, you should not make that vote to break state law. Let's listen to consent, continue to listen to the discussion.
Might influence my vote. Dr. Parker, did you have a comment before or after the vote?
I have a comment after the vote.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment before we take the vote? Okay. All those in favor of calendar option two, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I believe that was Wagner, Rogers, Marsh, Parker, Engel. All right. So that's five. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Oh, an abstention? Oh, not Rogers? I'm sorry, who was? I'm trying to make sure.
Show of hands.
I'll show a hands. My apologies, Mr. Rogers. So show a hands for option two.
You got those, Karen and Adam.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have the option two. It looked like Engel, Marsh, Parker, and I cannot remember his name. I met him, I saw him, I cannot remember his name. But they voted for option two. So it looks like four. Let's look who, let's see who votes for option one.
Gentlemen, those opposed, nay. Nay. Show of hands. So three. So option two, calendar.
So you have Rogers, Harvey, and Ellington Graves, who voted to break state law, voted for option one, which would have been in violation of state law, and would have obviously created a litigation between the school system and, and I'm not sure who would be the ones who would, who would sue them. But that's obviously where they're at.
Does pass for the next school year. And I believe that you had comments, Dr. Parker, and then Mr. Marsh may have a secondary or another motion.
You know, my follow-up comment to this is that the General Assembly needs to give us the flexibility. If this came up for a vote in the Senate, there is no question that it would pass. Absolutely no question. And I want to congratulate the North Carolina tourism industry for keeping it bottled up and not letting it come to a vote. We got an email letter from a J. Michael, Mike, sorry, Mitchell Armbruster. You know, I have been contacted by parents and business owners in Alamance County who have become aware that your board is considering adopting a calendar for the upcoming 25, 26 school year, which violates state law. Now, he doesn't name them, so I guess it's possible. But all the way at the end of the letter, he says, we haven't seen any studies, we've never seen any studies showing that an earlier start date actually leads to better student outcomes, which I think is arguable. And then he says
Okay, so now, see, there's a point right there. I mean, you're saying this is, you're saying it's arguable, but you're not presenting any evidence outside of this 20-year-old study. Like I said, I saw one in California. But, but Parker, you gotta, you've gotta put, bring that evidence. You, you say it's arguable? I mean, what do you mean, arguable? I mean, I guess what you mean is, if you find, and I think you may explain this, you, I think you say if they could take the test before the Christmas break, they would do better. Let's see if that's what you say.
But that is irrelevant. And that is not at all irrelevant. I mean, for me, the thing should be based on whether we get better student outcomes. And the fact that it doesn't come from the General Assembly and that we're not given this flexibility, I think is really shameful. I think the law has a, you know, marginal constitutionality. There is not a rational reason that they pick a specific date. And again, I think the school system should be allowed to have additional flexibility as far as the start date.
And you know, I think that's a good point. I think Rogers had made an earlier comment about the charter schools being a, you know, trial to see if they, they would, the things that they implemented would improve. And then the school systems could adopt those as they saw fit, as, as they believed it would help the students and to get better grades. And so we're, we're in agreement with that. The question is whether you should do it in violation of the law. There's steps that you need to take in order to pass this, in, in order to get it changed. This is not the way.
That's my comment.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Harvey, and then we'll go to Mr. Wagner, Ms. Harvey, Mr. Wagner.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone who did take those surveys and who filled those surveys out. It mattered, and it showed us where you stand and where you want ABSS to stand, and that matters. I agree with Dr. Parker. You know, the school system should be able to choose what their calendar is. It should not be based off of what no legislator think, or what no state people know. This is what is right for our school district and our kids within the school district. And that's where everyone should be thinking at all times. What is best for our kids? What is best for this school system? And that's why we have this board, to make that decision of what's best for ABSS. So.
Yeah, it does matter about the state legislatures. They are the legislative body of the state, and it does matter. You can't just ignore that. That is, that is incomprehensible that you even think that. And secondly, you're talking about this being a good decision. We don't know. There is no evidence outside of a 20-plus year in Rockingham County. And I looked in Texas, I looked in Florida, I saw something in California. I question everything for Florida. I'm going to do a little bit more research into it. But you would think if this were true, if this would increase the, the scores of the students, this would be something that every school system would be adopting. There would be evidence that would be abounding, that would show us, hey, this, you would be ignorant not to adopt this. But it's not there. But you actually stand, sit up there, and y'all try to tell us that this is the best. You don't know that. Now, I'm, I could agree with you, maybe before the Christmas break, as I've said, if they take their exams before that, I think that could help. For me, I would have appreciated the time to study after that, during and after, to get, to make sure I had it, you know, understood. But people are different. So I understand there's a retention issue, and she mentioned that earlier. So, and that's a good point.
Just a quick follow-up on that. I mean, we didn't make these choices without doing our homework, without listening to the community and our constituents. But I'll tell you, what change develops leadership. Change develops leadership. And this is an opportunity for Alamance County, ABSS, to lead our community going forward. We've got to look at this opportunity as a positive opportunity to move our community forward. I also make that comment, that change does develop leadership. And this is an opportunity for ABSS to lead our surrounding counties moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Marsh.
Well, I mean, when you say lead them, Avery, and his name's Avery Wagner, you voted to, to take off voted to, to take option two, which was to obey the law. I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly, I mean, I guess, are you thinking you, you would break the law the next year? I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I've got an email sent to him. I look forward to hearing from him. I hope he responds. If he doesn't, I'll be glad, I'll be doing a follow-up video on the ones that I emailed.
So just want to follow up with these guys and ladies. The reason I made my vote the way I did was because of what Dr. Parker just read, because we already knew, I mean, we knew before we got that letter that they were going to come after us. And we are, Alamance County is going to be held as an example. And if you know, just kind of follow the politics, follow all the politics, and you'll figure out what I'm talking-
But Chuck Marsh, you run a radio station. If someone were to violate a contract with you or violate something, you would take that same step. You would sue them because they broke the law. This is not, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just blown away with the thinking here. I really am. I understand that you want it changed, but to even contemplate, think about, and voting to break the law, now, I know you didn't, it, this doesn't make sense to me. It really doesn't. Well, you have heard exactly what unfolded in that meeting, and I hope you learned a little bit about the school board, and I hope you'll become a little bit more involved in that, encouraging them to follow the law and to do the right thing. I was glad to see that they did vote four to three to follow the law, the three detractors, that's troubling to me, to violate the law, and I hope it would be the same to you. Again, we could talk about this, is it best for the kids? They're putting, they're not putting evidence out there to, to show this is the case. Could it be? Absolutely. But let's see the evidence of that. You're looking at a 2001 survey? I mean, you'd have needed a couple of years to prove that. Was it, was this something, an anomaly year?